Hello. I'm going to call to order a Kentucky Regional School Committee meeting for May 10, 2022. Thank you all for your patience. We had a little bit of a late start, making sure we had everybody here that we needed to conduct business. Some of us are here in person, some of us are here virtually. I think we're working through some technical difficulties, but I think we're ready to go in the meantime. Before we get started, before I do roll call, I want to acknowledge that we recently lost four former employees of the district. Larry Fay, Mark Gaffney-Cattellahan, John Marriarty, and Frank Orlando. Needless to say, they made a lot of impact on a lot of people. They still mean a lot to a lot of people who work in this district and live in these communities. And I'd like to take a moment of silence for the board now. All right, on to business. Roll call. We have Wayne Adams. We're working on it. One second. Emily?
Here.
Marie?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Over there. Sorry, you can see her on the screen. The chair is here. Ashley is not present. Chris Redding?
Here.
And Dina Trotta is not present. Dina very, very much wanted to be here. She had a death in the family. We're thinking of her in our family.
You need to call her.
Did I skip you, Juan?
Yep. It's okay, I'm here.
There we go. I checked you. Juan is here. All right, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Majority vote?
3.56.
I believe for consent agenda, all we need to do is vote to accept the agenda.
Correct.
All those in favor?
We have to roll a call because there's some...
Oh, this is virtual.
Second.
When, dear Lana?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Ashley, here, Chris?
Yes.
Next up is public comment. Per the committee policy, you'll have two minutes to speak. We are on a hard deadline tonight for this meeting with lots to do, so I really appreciate everybody sticking to their two minutes. I will hopefully subtly put up my hand with about 20 seconds to go, so you'll know that your time is winding up. I thank you also for direct comments and comments to the chair, not referencing any individuals personally. And you are certainly welcome if somebody has already made the point you want to make, you can certainly just come to the table and endorse their point and cede your two minutes to someone else. First up, we have Amanda Duran.
Hello. I'm the school nurse and a parent at Bagnell, and most of you know I'm not going to be here next year. So these proposed cuts don't affect my flesh and blood, but they greatly affect my work family and the kids I consider my own at Bagnell. I read the district vision today, and it says it's to focus on students, but with the proposed cuts, it feels like it's to focus on certain students. And I truly believe that students in Groveland are facing discrimination based on their zip code, and I think it's horrible. Bagnell will look like this. Rising first graders will go from four classrooms down to three. So it's about 24 kids in each class, three teachers and one para for about 70 kids. These are kids who are still learning to tie their shoes and zip their own coats. Rising fourth graders will go from three classes to two, 28 kids in each class. Many of our third graders missed out on specialized services last year and are just beginning to catch up. Rising sixth graders, the biggest kids we have in our building, will go from three classes to two, about 27 kids to a classroom. This is a grade full of emotional, educational, and behavioral challenges, and to cram them into two rooms and deprive them of any real relationships with a staff member is going to break many. Para professionals, who do everything from sub for teachers to recess and bus duty, to provide special education services, and monitor students with unique needs, are looking at being cut even more throughout the district. As I recently had to clarify yesterday, there's no light duty for a para, and for the fact that all our schools rely so heavily on quality para professionals, they do deserve to make more than they could at McDonald's. During the Groveland Selectman meeting last week, it was discussed we need less administration, but that's not true. Throughout the towns, I think that we can agree we have the strongest elementary leadership that we've ever had in this district. Bagnell is ready to bloom under Mr. Day and Mr. Earhart's leadership, but there are changes that should happen. We searched and found a superintendent with a passion for PennTucket. He's ready for success. However, I think our district, our staff, our town selectmen, and mostly our students deserve a business manager who can communicate without demonstrating lateral violence and who is willing to openly answer and encourage discussion among the towns. Asking for transparency isn't an attack, it's a reasonable request for voters and selectmen to know it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne is joining us. Excellent. Thank you. Kathy Castren Ellis?
I have a brief letter, and I made some extra copies because I was doing this really fast after school today. So I apologize for the type of stuff that might be there or not, but there should be some copies you could pass around. Thank you so much for coming before me. This is not officially a voted letter for my board, but they did say it was okay for me to write a letter when I asked if I could write a letter. So let me just see what I put into this letter. As you know, voters in Groveland overwhelmingly said no to the request for tax override to fund the request of PennTucket's school budget. The vote was 727 no to 443 yes. In accordance with this clear message, the Groveland Board of Selectmen met on Wednesday, May 4, and made the following cuts to town budgets in order to increase the allocation to the school operating budget. We cut all stipends for appointed and elected boards and committees. We cut clerical and administrative positions. We cut all department expense budgets, not cut out, but we reduced them all. And at this time, any unfilled position will stay unfilled. By making these cuts to town budgets, we were able to allocate additional funds to the PennTucket Operating Assessment, which resulted in a 3% increase in funding when compared to last year's operating budget. But more importantly, Groveland is showing its intention to fund the PennTucket School Budget to the best of its ability within available revenues. This increased allocation was voted on by the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday, May 4, and the annual town meeting warrant was posted. I need to stress that this is the maximum allocation that the town can afford without incurring definite and severe hardship to human services, financial operations, town infrastructure, and the safety and well-being of its residents. In addition to this vote, the Groveland Board of Selectmen is requesting a special meeting with representatives of the PennTucket School Committee and the school administration pursuant to Section 12 A.6 of the Regional School Agreement, which states that if, in the opinion of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Board, the regional school district budget, as it currently exists, will not fit within the budgetary capabilities of a district town, then that town can request a special meeting to discuss the budget. I have two paragraphs left, if you could please indulge me.
Yes, if you can do it quickly. I'm trying to be consistent for everybody. Thank you.
Attached to this letter is a spreadsheet, which shows how the change in the formula of the required minimum contribution adversely impacted Groveland's share of the PennTucket budget, and in addition, how the change in student percentages, due in large parts of the pandemic, combined to cause a sudden and unforeseen increase in the assessment to Groveland. In addition to these factors, it is also critical to note that the state officials committed financial assistance in the form of ESER II funds to both Groveland and Merrimack, and then later reversed this decision after all annual town meetings had been concluded. This unprecedented takeback of $250,000 of ESER funds that were to be used last year to fund Groveland's PennTucket Assessment left the town with no other option than to go to its reserves and use stabilizations of stabilization funds to meet its obligation. While the town is very appreciative of the effort that the PennTucket Administration made to lower the request from the additional $250,000 to $111,000, this compounded the structural deficit that was already well underway. Collaboration, transparency, and open sharing of information and ideas are critical towards finding solutions that will balance the town budget while ensuring the best possible services to all residents. We also ask for the Regional School Advisory Council to be immediately convened to ensure the communications between the school and the towns are going on an ongoing basis even after the budget is resolved.
Kathy, I'm going to...
I've just got one paragraph.
I gave you your two paragraphs, and we are really on a tight deadline tonight.
And again, I'm not...
We have a letter.
It's not fair to other speakers.
We have a letter, it's in the record, and I really appreciate it, but I really want to give everybody their opportunity.
I just want to say one sentence, Ben. The sentence that's critical is...
Go for it.
If you are unable to come to a majority vote tonight that fits within what we've already allocated, we would ask for you to indulge us to have that meeting and to talk to you before you make a vote that is outside of it. Our allocation, I believe, is a little bit more than Merrimack's. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Ruth Rivard?
Thank you. My name is Ruth Rivard. I chair the Finance Board for the Town of Groveland. Such an audience. I wish I actually wrote a statement, but I didn't. This is the third time that I've appeared before you to make public comment. Every time, I think I've had a pretty consistent message that we want to work collaboratively together. I also just want to make it very clear for particularly the newer school committee members that I believe really part of the issue that we have here is that last year, we received a 5.25% increase in our operating assessment. We didn't have the money to fund that. Last year, we had to take money from reserves. That puts us $200,000 behind when we're starting this year. We don't have the funds. I want to make it clear to everybody, to the schools, to the communities, that the Town of Groveland has cut our expenses. We've given back a lot. Selectmen Castren Ellis went over it. I'm not going to reiterate what she talked about, but I just want you to know, we share the problem, we've made changes, we've cut back. I really, I don't want to see teachers being cut back. I spent an awful lot of time volunteering in the elementary classrooms when my kids were in there. I saw a lot of friendly faces today. I know that the teacher ratios are necessary in the elementary schools. I just feel that if we all worked together, if we worked more closely with the administration, then maybe we could come up with some creative solutions. I know that we don't want to take money out of what you're contributing to stabilization. I know that you don't necessarily want to raise user fees, but I kind of feel like we're in the position now that we need to be creative, we need to make some difficult decisions out of a long list of difficult decisions. And I just want you to know that we really share the problem with you. I personally voted yes for the override because I didn't want to be here tonight, but I hope that we can all work together. But the Town of Groveland really has absolutely no wiggle room left in our budget besides the 3% that we found room to allocate for the school. So thank you very much.
Jessica Souza?
Hi, my name is Jessica Souza, and I teach fourth grade at Bagnell. I'm going to read a letter that my team and I had emailed to you yesterday. Dear members of the PennTucket School Committee, we are the fourth grade classroom teachers at Bagnell, and we are writing to ask you to please consider budget options that do not involve a significant increase in class sizes. Without considering alternatives, multiple grades at Bagnell will have 26 to 30 students in a classroom. We are deeply concerned about the negative impact classes that large will have on our students. We cannot forget what these children have been through since March 2020 and believe that should be taken into consideration as you evaluate budget options. As an example, the incoming fourth graders were in first grade when the lockdown began, which means that this current school year as third graders is the first year they have been in school full-time for their elementary school career. Our classrooms are an extension of our family. We work at the beginning of each school year building that community, that safe space where each child feels comfortable and has what they need to learn. We are concerned that such large class sizes will make this difficult, and our students deserve better. With our special education staff split between grade levels and para professionals being pulled for substitute coverage on a regular basis, the resources we do have to offer our students are already razor-thin with our current class sizes. We urge you to examine how resources are assigned at each school within our district and consider an equitable allocation option so that all students within the PennTucket Regional School District are being provided the same educational opportunities. We would also encourage you to consider options beyond the classroom that do not directly impact student outcomes. As you know, one of PennTucket's pillars is children first. Budgetary solutions that drastically increase class sizes do not align with this pillar. We do not envy the task that lies before you and are very grateful for your commitment to the PennTucket Regional School District. We respectfully ask that you take into consideration the points made in this letter as you consider the budget for the 2022-2023 school year. Respectfully, Carrie Gale, Amy LaFata, Jessica Souza.
My name is Liz Wazneski, but in PennTucket, I'm known as Ms. W. due to that practically unpronounceable Polish name. I taught third and fourth grades at Donnie School for 10 years, mostly sixth grade at Bagnell for six years. Next year, I'm retiring at the end of November, so I thought I would speak about my experience and my long-term perspective as PennTucket grapples with the current budget challenges. I began this year hopeful that we would be back on a positive track after two years of pandemic teaching. However, students returned to the classroom this year having greater academic and social emotional needs than ever before, greater needs than I had ever seen or imagined, and we were not prepared to meet those needs. There simply was not enough professionals in the school to do the jobs that needed to be done. This year of teaching has been the most challenging of my 17-year career. Thus, I'm retiring, and it makes me sad because I remember a different education world. I remember a different PennTucket. I remember a PennTucket where there were enough support to deal with badly behaving students or students disengaged entirely, where paras in the classroom providing IEP services were not spending the greater portion of their year as substitutes in other grades, when there were dedicated special ed personnel for each grade so that services were met and co-teaching was possible. I remember a time when two people were not expected to keep 63 sixth graders safe at recess. I remember when principals were instructional leaders and not fire marshals reacting to the latest crisis. I remember a time in education where teachers were respected, not only with words, but in an environment where they could do their best teaching, when increasing expectations for teachers and students came with more support, not less, when I did not come to school anxious and scared for my students, administrators, and fellow teachers. I remember a time in PennTucket when this type of situation would be met with outrage and not acquiescence. I can only give my opinion of the way things were, the way things are, and the way things were. I hope this will give you insight so that the decisions you make tonight can return PennTucket to being the district I have known and loved. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Megan Paul, and I have three children that attend the Bagnell School. I have a sixth grader, a fourth grader, and a kindergarten. We moved to this town five years ago, and one of the reasons we moved here was to give my children a better education. We've had amazing teachers who have persevered over these difficult past few years. I've loved being at Bagnell, and my kids have really enjoyed their time here. This year, however, is a different story. My son is in the kindergarten class of 18 students, and it has been a difficult year to say the least. There are four kindergarten classes with 78 students total right now. Even with the teachers and support staff doing everything they are able, the classroom behaviors are exceedingly difficult to manage. At the start of the year, the teacher was in the classroom alone with no para or additional support. We advocated for her to get a para, and she did for a short period of time before that para got pulled to go help somewhere else. Once again, leaving her alone. How is this okay? I've never heard of a kindergarten class without a para, let alone in a post-COVID year when students are severely lacking the skills necessary to behave in a classroom. I listen to the stories my children and their friends tell me about what they observed in the kindergarten classrooms, and I am horrified. I know COVID has complicated things for students' social, emotional, and academic needs, but that is even more reason that we need smaller class sizes with more support, not less. We cannot go from having four kindergarten classes to three first-grade classrooms of 26 students, which will most likely increase while people are moving into the town. It's not fair to the teachers, and it's definitely not fair to the students. I also don't understand how Paige School can have enough teachers or what seems like more than enough, and we don't. How is this fair? We are one district and should all be treated equally. I would strongly encourage each and every one of you to go to a kindergarten class at Bagnell, observe firsthand the constraints that these classrooms are under and how difficult it is with 18 to 20 students per class before you approve any budget where you think it's okay to have 26 or more students in a first-grade classroom.
Amber Yulos?
I'm Amber Yuloscher, the nurse at the Sweetsers School and the lead nurse of the district. I would like to address concerns and the impact of reducing the number of nurses in the district. The middle high school will have roughly 965 students next year. A 1998 legislative report recommended that the school nurse-to-student ratio be one full-time professional registered nurse in each building with 200 to 500 students. In buildings with more than 500 students, an additional 0.1 full-time nurse is recommended for each additional 50 students. That means at PennTucket Middle High School, according to a 1998 legislative report, to meet that minimum standard, there should be 1.93 full-time nurses at the middle high school. So essentially, two nurses for that number of students. If there will be only one nurse at the middle high school next year, this does not even come close to meeting the standard from 1998. And we all know the health and wellness needs of the students have increased exponentially since that time. Additionally, PennTucket registers for what is called medication delegation. I don't have time to go into the details of that. With this ratio change, we are at risk for not having that approved by the state. That does mean field trips will be impacted. Anytime there is a nurse out, there will be issues, and the flexibility of the nurse's daily practice will be affected. I would also like to draw your attention to the PennTucket Policy GE, which is known as the nurse's policy. It has three different lines in it. The last line is if one building should be closed and the students dispersed to other areas for learning, then the RN assigned to that building will remain on duty and traverse between locations and students. The other sentence is about making sure that there is an RN employed in every school at PennTucket. And I know the conditions in the policy are not exactly the same, but the intention of the policy is attributable. In 2011, when the policy was written, the school committee saw how important it was to maintain adequate nursing staff. I ask that you continue to maintain that standard today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who took the time to sign up and speak, and to everybody who submitted correspondence to the school committee online. Is there still an opportunity for public comment? No, the sign-up was for... Cut off for this morning. So it's a public meeting and you can't show this? It's a meeting in public, not a public meeting, and there was an opportunity to sign up, but it closed at 9:30. We're going to go on to new business, which brings us to the budget. And Dr. Dean?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. So I apologize for everybody not looking out this way. I'm trying to run this at the same time, so I'm staring at the screen. That is the reason why. So I wanted to go ahead and just show everybody, just the school committee in particular, what it is we're doing, why we're doing it, and what the options are that you have tonight. So just a little background, and this was, I appreciate very much that someone said out there, the first pillar, I think that was Amanda Duran saying the number one was it. Someone out there said the first pillar is children first always. That is how we operate. As a school district, these are the four pillars we operate under. Children first always is the first pillar. Second pillar is communication, makes or breaks an organization. Third, professionalism. And the fourth is curriculum. That is the foundation of how we manage our school districts. So at both Merrimack and in Groveland, this was a slide I showed during my presentations. And this is the exact slide, except for the first part was if then, but we didn't have to take out the if then because that part's gone. We know what it is. So when you read this, it says, "If Groveland and Merrimack vote no, loss of 16 teachers or cost-equivalent positions plus more classroom teachers pulled to fill special education positions, significantly increased class sizes, greater issue in elementary, but still three and a half to seven in middle school, high school." We've heard everyone speak to the elementary part. Loss of support personnel to help with curriculum, teachers to clean buildings, attempt to create a new budget to send to towns with notifications by contract will have to be set. We'll get to that later. And then given the above, we can expect a negative impact on student achievement, though we will do everything possible to minimize it, given the challenging situation. So again, this was not something that I wrote or put together for tonight. This was something that was done in previous, in the previous, for previous meetings. So this question, how did I come up with 16? Was it just a random guess? It was not. Before we took the budgets to the school committee, we went through, we sat down, and we had to understand, if this doesn't pass in both towns, what will we be looking at? And we were able to come up with, it's going to cost 16 employees, 16 teachers or cost equivalencies. And that was taking into account all the other things we could reduce, some of the things that I've mentioned. So just, I think everyone in the school committee, you certainly understand this, when I'm out there speaking, I don't exaggerate, I don't blow things. What I'm giving you is factual information. And I know that there's folks that are out there on social media picking pieces and sending it out there and twisting and spinning it, and you can listen to that. You absolutely can, and you can believe that person. I'm just telling you, I cannot campaign. I'm a superintendent of schools. I'm not allowed to say vote yes or vote no. All I can do is provide factual information. So that's how we knew 16 going into this. So I will tell you, that night when the no votes came in, I already had in the board of my office, okay, here's the scenario. Elementary is easy, secondary is a little bit more complicated, and all the other areas we had gone through four months before saying if this, or three months before saying if this had happened. Here's the areas we could contemplate, and those are the ones I'll present to you tonight. So what's on the table? The answer is everything. Everything is on the table. We're trying to make up $1.34 million. Nobody in this meeting, any, none of the voters, are going to walk away feeling good about what has happened tonight. Doesn't matter which way this vote goes. No one's going to walk away feeling good. No one in the audience is going to walk away feeling like they've got a victory. This is not a victory. This is a reality, and this is where we are. So this is a common thing we hear, take it out of administration. I heard Ms. Duran mention this, so I'm going to just piggyback on what she says. So what does that mean? I've heard this said at a Board of Selectment meeting, just want to take it out. Where? So there's five district administrators. Two of them you're required to have. So and then you have the Assistant Superintendent, who oversees all of the curriculum and most of the HR. Director of Student Services oversees special education. And then you have the Director of IT and Technology Integration, which is in every single classroom everywhere. That's your five district administrators. And if you look at the buildings, in Merrimack, there are two buildings. If you take one out there, you don't have one person going between two buildings. If you go to Paige, they don't have two people, they have 1.5. That 0.5 really focuses more... That point-five really focuses more on the special education and is the special education coordinator for that building. Bagnell is the largest elementary, and to Ms. Duran's points, just rewind a little bit, you should learn, we should all learn from history. When there was one singular principal, the prior, I believe it was seventeen years, they had thirteen different principals, for all the reasons that Ms. Duran said, because they've become putting out fires left and right, no one's focusing on the primary job of what a principal should be, which Ms. Wizniewski pointed out, and that's to be the primary educator. Not possible, because we're involved with too many other things. And the middle school, high school, there's two principals, two APs, and one AD. And that's again for, uh, we just heard, oh, no, it wasn't. It was Nurse Brady Yeloczer who talked about the size of the middle school. That's for a thousand people. And so there is nothing there to cut. Can you cut something? Absolutely. Everything's on the table. If you wanna get rid of Dr. Jarvis, Director of Student Services, sure, special ed just goes this way and that way, and we end up spending more because we're in litigation and lawsuits nonstop. So kind of one of the other pieces I mentioned in meetings, yes, we can do this, there is a consequence for an action. And that is the way, um, things are gonna be working out tonight. So increase fees, that's another thing we hear. Yeah, absolutely. We can increase, we can do that. Is it going to be, we're gonna hear questions, I'm sure, from the school committee, this isn't fair, we're targeting one group and not another? Yeah, all of that's true. All of that's true. But it's the reality that we are in. None of this is gonna be fair for anybody. None of this is gonna be good. But it's just where we are. Charge a busing fee. So yes, this has been done. If you haven't been around this, this has been attempted, and I, I understand it, what I'm told, it was not effective and failed horribly. And you have to answer these questions. Who's going to be collecting money? Who's monitoring all those stops? Are we going to ask the bus drivers to police the people, making sure they have badges? And what happens when they engage in a fight with the student and the parent who are trying to get the kid on the bus? Um, and are we, kids who are on half-days are going over a friend's house, are we charging them? Is that a daily fee? Who's collecting that money? So there's a potential where you might have to add someone to help, uh, address that. But another important point here is when we apply for regional, the, the regional transportation reimbursement, one of the boxes you have to check is, do you charge a fee? So I'm not Nostradamus, but I am going out on a limb and saying, if you check the box, yes, we do, what comes back is going to be what you would've gotten minus whatever you collect for fees. So all possible, again, everything's on the table. So use OPEB and surplus or E and D. So we already used, so I don't know, so this might've been lost out there in social media line, but we already did use surplus to help bring the budget down on the transportation, because as just a reminder, we have five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand on the plus side on transportation alone. So we already used money to do that. The reason why more money was not put towards it, and Dr. Jarvis, who's sitting behind me, can certainly speak to this, is because every year, there's an ebb and flow of students who come in and out of the districts, needs shift, and all of a sudden, we might need to place a student out, or a student might come to us who already is out and we're responsible for that student. So we have to pay for that student. If we do not have a backup plan, then we are cutting teachers or something midway through the year. And as a parent, I don't think I'd be super psyched to hear my teacher's gone in November because something just happened and we didn't prepare for it. Also, we're supposed to have four-point-one million stabilization. We right now have one-point-eight million. And the towns also have the situation, they're trying to get that all squared away. OPEB's a requirement, it has to be fully funded, it's not for a bunch more years, but we're not even close to reading where we need to be.
Sixty million, sure.
Right. So, so, and then anything we were to add from here is one time, it's not solving, it is solving the one time. And I'll be honest with you, when we get through here, some of my recommendations are, we just need to make this happen for this year and then get it solved. So those were some of the most common things that we, we hear. The job of the school committee tonight is not to go and say, yep, we want this, 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 hodgepodge it together. The job of the school committee tonight is to vote a budget, a budget number for fiscal year twenty-three. That is your task. So here's reductions and adjustments. I'm gonna emphasize, the can is underlined here. These are elementary adjustments, this is just elementary, that can be made. So three teachers at Bagnell, if you do that, currently, that's about, those three classes, nineteen-point-two average. If you make those cuts, it's gonna increase eight-and-a-half on average, or twenty-seven-point-seven was what it would be for next year. The one teacher at Paige, and in support to note, we heard a couple comments about this. So Paige only has two teachers per grade level. There's one grade where they have three. So if you take two teachers and reduce it down to one, that's one teacher teaching roughly forty students. It's just, the, the scale of magnitude is much different at Paige, much smaller place. But for that particular class, it would be an increase of nine-point-two. The three teachers at Merrimack, for fiscal year, fiscal year, that's about nineteen in that classroom, that would go up to twenty-seven-point-seven. Uh, in addition to that, we reduce the art position, as we have a, an amazing art teacher there who's retiring this year, um, and that would be reduced from one-point-oh to point-six, because that's what's needed to meet, to see all the students throughout the week and teach them art. And then also at Bagnell, no lead library or media aid. So those are the elementary adjustments that can be made. Middle school and high school adjustments that can be made. Uh, we heard from, uh, Nurse Brady Yeloczer, so yes, one nurse position right now. Now, the middle school, high school slate for two, and that's moving, that's moving one of those two to Bagnell. Um, so there's be one at the middle school, high school, one at Bagnell. Reduction of one-point-two English language arts positions, one math position, one science position, one visual arts position, a point-seven performing arts position. Um, so that, that point-seven's actually a reduction from one-point-oh to point-five, and the other point-two is something we're contracting, we're contracting out right now. We have a, a individual who's at one-point-two, um, and then one PE wellness position. So those are the adjustments that can be made at the middle school and high school. And here is a wonderful, um, document here that shows all the different possibilities. I'll, I'll go through them. So you can reduce high school, middle school supplies up to seventy-five thousand. Someone should ask, but why can we do that? And the answer is, well, traditionally, we use those funds in order to address our severely, what was, uh, technological deficits in addition to all these other needs that are needed in a classroom, just to operate. Our hope is, we can address most of this, um, when the new building opens through FF&amp;E and the new building project. That's the hope. Won't be able to address all of it. Going across, you can reduce five para educators. So we are actually missing seven para educators, I think there's several vacancies right now. You can reduce five para educators, that's up to a hundred thousand dollars. It was said before and it's absolutely true, we need para educators, so you reduce it five, there, there's consequences to a decision. A bus route reduction, each bus route you reduce is sixty thousand dollars. Someone's going to ask, well, how long does that mean my child's gonna be on the bus? Uh, we could not tell you that tonight. Like, that has to go through the transportation. We tell them, hey, right now, we've got twenty-two buses, we want twenty-one. And then they go through and they have to put it into their system, and they calculate that out. Reduce curriculum and instruction by ten percent, so that'd be thirty-two-thousand-three-hundred-eighty-one. So that, that fund right there, if you're teaching with us, you know that we have, um, next year, we'll be introducing this new science curriculum. So that will be coming in, but this is going to be a lot more photocopying, there's gonna be some, some consumables that we're not gonna be able to purchase. So that would drop down, um, those opportunities in the classroom. There's a percussion contract. We have, uh, someone on the outside that comes in to work with students on percussion, you can reduce that, it's twenty-four-five. Not hiring the tech repair or tech theater positions. We, we could probably cover the tech repair, tech theater positions, gonna create a whole slew of issues for community use of, um, the new auditorium, but that, yeah, these are, none of these are good. No longer paying for sixth or seventh grade trips. We do that right now for the CBL project adventure, because it's those groups coming together. Um, and so that doesn't mean they can't happen, it just means PTOs, PTA's, parents will have to, have to fund those. Not hiring the HR manager. We spoke ad nauseam about the problems of not having an HR manager and will keep on going through. Do not convert the special education coordinators to admin days working in the summer. Again, these are three folks who work throughout the summer, um, or aren't supposed to be working some, but come in and have to do paperwork because we have such a high need. So that's forty-five thousand athletics. So we have some levels where there's varsity JV one, JV two, or there's varsity JV one and freshman. Here, we would be saying, you have varsity and a JV only, and we would restrict the number of stu, people who can participate. So as an example, if you're out there and your sport is, is like, there's safety concerns, well, then you can't have massive numbers to say, hey, we don't, we're only gonna go with two coaches. You can't. Like, it still has to be a safe, competitive environment. I'm not hiring the two custodians, that's seventy-one thousand and change. Um, and this is, so, uh, in the presentations, I said, we, we put in, um, that we needed six special education teachers. That was one of the things, that's what we need. But we, there is no getting around, we absolutely right now have to have four. So what mostly you could do right now is two. That doesn't mean we can do two, like, we might not be able to do any, but that's what we can do as of today, which again, gotta go back to that surplus. That is why you have surplus, it's things there to back you up in case something does happen. You can't cut it from both sides and then cover the legal requirements that you're, you have to fulfill. So fees that can be considered, and, so I'm gonna talk about these fees, Greg, I believe the school committee sets the fees. So that's, that's gonna be-
For, for athletic and facilities, before and after an arching phase of education.
Okay, so these are all facilities that can be considered. Greg just said what they were. And there, there's just my reminder, go ahead. We're not getting into all the details. That, that's kind of my burden, uh, along with our, our team, to try to figure out how to make this work. But the budget, with the vote for budget, so here is what my recommendation is to the school committee. So for personnel and other reductions, um, I wouldn't take the full amount of the high school, middle school supplies, but I would reduce it by forty-five thousand eight-sixty-four. I would take out the field trips. I would reduce para educators, not by five, but by two. Athletic teams, I would take that out, reducing them to only two, uh, per sport. Reduce, get rid of the percussion contract, there's no HR manager, take out the two sped teachers, um, no tech repair, tech theater aid, and not extending the special education coordinator days. That, again, is a contract that they would run into the summer. So fee increases. I'd increase fees, I recommend, it can be increasing fees before and after school, um, so it increased about eighty dollars average per month, uh, per student. I can tell you, so I did some comparisons, it's really hard, it's not easy to come up with, 'cause some places offer discounts, um, but with Newbury Port, this would put us on par, a little bit behind Newbury Port, but it puts us higher, uh, than some, a couple other districts nearby. Athletic fees is to remove the family cap and then double those. And the bus route reduction, uh, that impacts time on the bus. And again, if you reduce a bus, that has a potential additional effect, not even just time on a bus, but we may have to be pushing the elementary times further back, uh, because it would take more time for the bus to go around, collect the children. And when you're in some rural places that the buses have to go, that just takes more time. So that total is three-hundred-twenty-five-nine-fifty. So if you take those two, one-point-three-four million is what we have to make up. So you have the eight-hundred-and-fifty-four, or minus the eight-hundred-and-fifty-four, it gives you the four-eighty-five. So that, that eight-fifty-four is the two previous slides. So to make up four-hundred-and-eighty-five, you divide that by sixty, so that's about eight positions. You start off with fifteen-point-three. Sixteen was the first one I wanted, but it's fifteen-point-three. So below are the ten places where I believe, um, we could work from. And that would be a one nurse position, one-point-two English language arts at the middle school, high school, one math at middle school, high school, one science at middle school, high school, one visual arts at middle school, point-seven performing arts at middle school, high school, also, they serve sometimes elementary, PE wellness at the middle school, high school, reducing the art, that's Paige from one-point-oh to six, to point-six, that's just at Paige at the elementary, the reduction at Bagnell of the lead library media aid, and two elementary positions are possible, one at Bagnell and one at Merrimack. And again, if you're at Bagnell and Merrimack, you say, why is Paige not, there's only, there's only one person. If you reduce one, and it also is a number piece, without getting specific, um, this is purposely, and I think I say this in the next slide, that is correct. That is what I'm doing. I'm protecting elementary at the cost of the middle school, high school, absolutely. Because developmentally, the children, as they're coming up and through, these teachers are going to be in big classes with those children all day. At the high school, Mr. Conan and Mr. Seymour have been working on this, they've done the numbers as well, they'll go up to classes, and classes will go up four to seven. So if you have one class of four to seven as an educator, and then your next class is not on four to seven, then it's not too bad. If you're in elementary, you have them all day. It's a much different experience. But developmentally, those children, the smaller class sizes are gonna do so much, have such a greater benefit. And if you, if you don't go that route, you're going to pay for it later on. So when they get to the secondary level, there's going to be struggles. Um, so again, it's not the decision of the school committee to say, this is what we're gonna do, uh, this is what you should do. You absolutely am willing to hear some of your thoughts, uh, and take that into account. Um, but it's, it's unfortunately my burden, when I say unfortunate, I'm happy to take on the burden, because that's what I do. As you can see, we, we're all gathered here, and this is, I'm saying, we're here because the budget failed. I went around, tried to find facts, whatever happened, well, people voted the way they did, so with that, um, I'm now having to make these adjustments. But absolutely, um, willing to listen to any of your decisions, right? Additional recommendation is that we do not pursue a second override. There's a lot of reasons for that, you can read them here, but I'll summarize them. The best outcome of pursuing a second override is that everything has to go to vote again to the towns. So you're putting both Grohlland, Grohlland actually has a, has a, a town meeting coming up, but you're putting Merrimack in a, in a position where they'd have to have a town meeting and then vote. Votes have to get created, they have to get printed, and then they have to come back, they have to set up their elections. We'd be voting on this, if you're in Merrimack with Grohlland, you'd be voting on this sometime in June, maybe the end of June, which means we would then come back, we would post the position early July, and sometime in the middle of July, we would be filling those positions. In the meantime, all of the teachers, because we don't have a budget yet, all teachers would be receiving, not all teachers, all the teachers, which would be, I think, about ten, or-
Be over six, be closer to the sixteen, actually.
Yeah, you're right. So they would, that's right, sorry. Fifteen-point-three, sixteen would be receiving letters of non-renewal. If you're receiving a letter of non-renewal, guess what you're doing? You're going somewhere else to get a job. So when we're trying to pick someone up in the middle of July, it's not going to be the same people that we just had. So waiting means, right, if we wait, we're gonna have those non-renewals, more than ten classroom teachers. If we approve a budget tonight, if we approve the budget number tonight, we only have to hand out, I believe it's four, non-renewal letters. Might be more, that, that's due to the budget. So huge improvement. But most importantly, we need to secure as many of our, of our teachers as possible. We don't need to be handing out letters and crossing our fingers and hoping for the best. Merrimack was a swing of a hundred votes, Grohlland was much larger gap. I, I don't know that that is going to change. Um, and I think what we put together here kind of makes it so you shouldn't have to. Now, if we leave here tonight, and no decision is made, just a reminder for everybody, we need six-point-zero, it's a budget vote. So we need a vote of six-point-oh in order to have a budget, one way or the other, if you vote for, say you want an override, or you vote the budget number. But we need six-point-oh. If we do not come to an agreement tonight, we are operating off of a one-twelfth budget fiscal year twenty-two, which means that number sixteen of letters that are going to out is going to go up staggeringly high, because we have to notify, contractually, we have to notify our educators by this Friday, if they're not going to be returning, or if there's a potential for them not returning. So it puts, like I said, no one's going to leave here feeling good about anything. But it is the situation we're in, it's a job we're tasked with doing, and I certainly believe that we can figure this out. Chairman, that's what I have.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna, before we get to any specifics, I wanna give everybody the opportunity, if anybody on the committee had any questions for Dr. Veer, his team on the presentation he just made, and Julie and Wayne- he just made, and Julie and Wayne, I will, I will try to keep my eye on you, just feel free to shout, Emily will help me out. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Veer?
Okay, so we can, it sounds like get to business.
So you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's, we're gonna have a conversation about the budget. We're gonna have to do this in a certain order for this to make sense, right, before we can really seriously discuss a number.
Yeah, so if we're gonna have a conversation about the budget number, you could, you could jump right to the budget number, but then if you do that and then the fees aren't approved, then I'm making-
That number is based on us approving a couple of other things.
That's correct.
Correct.
Well, if you vote the budget number, you have a budget. If you change, what you do when you change the fees is determine how many of those cuts you get to save.
That's right.
Yeah, it sounded like we had to-
Sorry. So I would start off with the fees first.
Okay, so you have, and I think you have some language that you can share with us before we do that conversation.
So that would be a first motion. And on that slide, what you're seeing is the current rates for the AM, the monthly rate, the PM monthly rate, and the AM/PM provide.
So before we have that, so we can have that conversation, first of all, does anybody wanna make a motion, as outlined there? Chair can certainly do it, but I don't need to say anything else if they want to. So the chair will make a motion to increase the AM or PM after-school fees by $50 a month and the AM/PM fees by $110 a month.
Okay.
Good, Maryam?
Yes, Wayne, yes.
Thank you both. Okay, first, any questions or comments on the fee proposal for AM and PM after-school
I appreciated the background information that we were able to see about those neighboring districts. You know, as a family with two working parents, I feel this, and it's really hard to think about this as, but, you know, classroom teachers are way more important. And looking at the surrounding districts and what they are charging, this still doesn't put us either actually, you know, over that, so that was helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna slightly echo Emily's thoughts here and just remind everybody that throughout the entire budget process, what we've said consistently is that wherever we could, we're going to prioritize classrooms. And that means finding some alternative revenues, certainly now. And so this and the next subject that we'll take up are both certainly indicative of that. If there are no other comments or questions, I'll call, vote, you can do that by hand and or you can just hold them up.
Like a roll call?
Yeah. Okay, we'll do it by a roll call. On motion one, Wayne?
Yes.
Lana?
Yes.
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Julie? It's not here.
Sorry, yes.
Chair votes yes, Ashley is not here. Chris? Now, Greg, it's next to athletic fees.
So this is actually the athletic fees are there. Greg has, I think, we, this was discussed several months ago, so you may have that in the old notes, but Greg, I believe, has the fees, but the motion here is to remove the family cap, double all athletic fees for fiscal year '23 only. So this is not looking for impunity. As I mentioned earlier, this would be, we've gotta figure out how to make this happen. So here's one way. And also just going to point out the balance here. AM/PM, AM/PM before and after school program impacts elementary primarily. This impacts secondary, so it's somewhat of a balance.
Can I make a quick suggestion before we entertain this, if we're going to talk about it? The motion to remove the family cap and double all the fees for fiscal year... Last year, we adjusted the fall athletic fees. We didn't ever touch winter and spring, so it would, I would say it adversely affected fall. So if you, I would say if we take a motion to double the athletic fees from fiscal year '21 and remove the family cap for one year only, I think that might be more fair.
So repeat that, Greg.
It's a motion to double the athletic fees in effect for fiscal year '21 and remove the family cap for fiscal year '23 only. I think that would be more fair where we already did a little increase in the fall last year. Wouldn't want to double that.
So the fees in effect for FY '21 are removing the cap for, that was in effect for FY '23?
Yeah, so doubling FY '21's fees and removing the cap.
Wait, there's a hand up.
I was just gonna make that motion, but Greg changed.
So you're making a motion as reflected in Greg's language?
Yep.
And double all athletic fees as of the fiscal year '21.
Second? Any questions or comments?
So I'd lump in an opponent to raising athletic fees. I understand, I'm all in favor of it, it saves teaching positions. By all means, one of the reasons I've never been in favor of the athletic fees being raised is because I feel like we charge certain sport levels, whether it be JV, JV2, freshman, a considerable amount of fees, and they don't always get their playtime. I think I've noted that in the past when I've been in a unit, do it. And again, while I don't, don't like having to be in this position to raise fees on families when there was before and after school cap, for their athletic fees, it's worth saving a teaching position, or two, or three, whatever we can, whatever we can do. But I don't think, I know that in the past, there's been several of us not in favor, so. But I, I did have a private conversation when this was listed, and I believe waivers will still be available to those.
Oh, sorry. Yes, thank you, yes. Absolutely, with the athletic fees, for people watching, if there's economic hardship, students, families could absolutely apply for a waiver through the business manager.
So I think a piece that's missing in this conversation is the fact that eight years ago, roughly around then, we took our fees and we, we cut them in half. So in, because we realized that, you know, there's certain sports that the fees are really high and it prevented kids from taking part. So the rationale, I'm assuming, of doubling them is kind of getting them back. Like, if you look at our fees compared to most local districts, we're about half. So we're not just randomly saying we're doubling them, we're just taking away the discount that we've offered for a number of years, and I don't think any of us are happy about that. But for people who might be wondering, well, that seems like a huge amount, we've really probably, as parents, been paying less than we would've had in neighboring districts. Point of clarification?
It's done for fiscal year 2015's budget, when they were cutting down.
Seven, eight?
Yeah, I would, I would echo that, even in the short time, relatively short time that I've been on the, I believe this has come up at least once, maybe twice, and the committee has always been really hesitant to increase fees for families, even though, and some members of the PD have pointed out, they're relatively low compared to a lot of our neighbors and other districts. But it was something, you know, we felt like as much as we could was the right thing to do, and that unfortunately was time and it didn't mean keeping positions in classrooms, and now it does. So I think that's how we're approaching this. If there's no other questions or comments, I will call a vote. Wayne?
Yes.
Lana?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, bring us to budget.
So this would be a motion to approve a budget, a fiscal year '23 PRSD budget in the amount of $47,846,000, which represents the amount that does not put, doesn't, would not need to go to towns for an override, is that correct?
Based upon what Merrimack voted at their town meeting, based upon what West Newbury has far more than this in their omnibus, this would be an approved budget for you at this point. And neither, no town would be going to an override unless Grohl chooses to, but I think that they've made up this number because they had requested earlier what their number would be, based upon what Merrimack did.
Okay, the chair will make a motion to approve an FY '23 PRSD budget in the amount of $47,846,000.
Second.
Any questions or comments? So I guess I'm just very quickly to remind everybody that what the superintendent laid out tonight is, is a visiting's very best approach of making the most of what they have here, and that it's basically our job to give them that and time and fat, so they can do the best they can. They are the ones, the people who are left, and some of the people behind them, and some of the people here tonight are the ones who actually have to implement this every single day. And if we can ask them to do that hard work, I don't think any of us particularly feels good about this vote, but if we're gonna ask them to do that every day, what we can do is try and get it to a, in the timely as possible fashion, so they can make the most of it. We took a week to be a little sore about it, to think about it, and have, you know, process things a little bit, but it's time to look and do the best work they can with what they have. That said, if there's no questions or comments, I will call a vote. Wayne?
Yes.
Lana?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Marie?
Yeah.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Chris?
Yes.
Please declare the vote total, Maryam, the records for the state.
$47,846,000.
The vote.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Just to say it's more than 6.0, whatever it is, 7.1, whatever the heck number is.
Can I ask you a question? 7.12?
Make sure it's part of the vote in the record, please.
So I think we're good. Before I adjourn, very quickly, I know I took everybody an extra few minutes by speaking tonight, very quickly, just wanna say, it would be very easy at this point for all of us to continue to do what we've been doing, I feel like, frankly, even prior to the vote, and certainly in the past week, which is get really frustrated and point fingers at each other in different communities and ask, "Why do the people vote more, why didn't certain people, certain towns support it differently? Why didn't we, around this table, do more in our towns to get voted out?" All that is totally understandable. Frustration is completely understandable, but there's at least a good chance we're gonna be here next year in a similar position. I don't think anybody in any of our communities will be able to say this time that they are surprised that we are in this position and having this conversation. And so I think the best thing we can do is now, not a couple months from now, but now, and I think this has already been mentioned tonight, is start having those conversations collectively on all three communities, and approach that over the next year, to maybe come to voters in a little bit more consolidated fashion, and maybe get their support next year for what we all, I think, agree our students and families believe.
I would just add to that, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate saying that. It's, we're not a community that needs to be fighting or throwing stones one town to another, it's just not how we, that's not how I was raised, growing up in Grohl, it's not how I expected now in what in Merrimack, it's we all are in this together. This is our collective, these are, these are our children, it's not one town, it's all of our children. But I just would point out, like, when this, if this does come up again in the following year, one of the things that's really important for people to understand is that this problem is created because we received $67,500 from the state for an increase this year. That's it. And we didn't get $144,000 from regional transportation. So we receive, we are receiving negative funds from the state this year. That happens, but we didn't pass. The next day, I received in my inbox an email from the MARS, the Mass Association of Regional Schools. It was an article that April was a blockbuster year for the state of Massachusetts. They're 12% higher than what they expected in terms of revenue, which is billions of dollars. So here's Bintucket, cutting 1.34 million, and the state's telling me they've got billions of extra money. Something is extremely wrong with them. The best comment I heard in town meeting was a gentleman stood up and said, "They just don't listen to us." And I'm not talking about our representatives, I would tell, our representatives are very supportive. We don't have numbers. And superintendents, we tried four, three years ago to point out to them these red flags of these escalating costs. Our population dropped drastically. We've lost 800 or 900 students in 10 years, but our special education costs by themselves have gone up 84%. So we are losing classroom teachers because our population's dropping, so we're not bringing back those positions. That's how we've been able to avoid this, but now that's balanced. But while we've been dropping those positions, our special education and other associated positions are going through the roof. And that's okay, like, that's not a fault of students who need those services. Students need those services, they should be getting those services. It's just the lack of funding that the state's providing to address those is secondhand. It's not okay, it's completely inappropriate. And then on Thursday, we're on a call with the commissioner, and they're asking us to set aside money in fiscal year '23 in case we need PPE. That does not exist. So the state's asking us to set aside, set aside money, they have billions of dollars extra, and we're cutting 1.34 million dollars. You all can do what you need to do, but if you sit silently, then we're part of the problem. Be vocal, get out there, explain to the legislators, "This is not okay, this formula does not work." If we don't, if this is not successful, we will be considered a held harmless district. There's another held harmless district this week, $1.8 million override on the table. This is going to just be the case for districts like ours. It's not a good situation. Sorry, I didn't mean to use the poorly pulped, I apologize, but it is extraordinarily frustrating.
Thank you, I think that's the last word. I'll call, vote for a chairman. Emily? Wayne?
Yes.
Lana?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Marie?
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.